Called to order the Lowell City Council Regular Meeting for our Tuesday, September fifteenth, at seven oh four. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bennett.
Here.
Council Harris. Council Stratus. Council Drutt.
Here.
Mayor.
I'm here.
Okay. Okay, we do have a quorum. So we stand for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the government of Oregon, to stand one nation, of God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Next up on the agenda, we've got a couple of changes. First, a public hearing, we won't be holding that. Does no, you want to speak to that?
Sure. Yes, I don't know if you were all able to see the email, but the applicant submitted a timeline waiver and wanted to delay the public hearing for sixty days. So we are bringing this back in November. That means we can also reschedule it for a planning commission hearing and a council hearing in November. So that was at the applicant's request.
Do we think it needs to go back to the planning commission, did they think?
Yes.
There's going to be enough changes that.
That's the normal process. The only reason we were skipping it last time is because, you know, we were under the timeline.
Right, right. Okay, yeah. That's good to hear. Any other changes anybody see the need for? If not, the first item up is the consent agenda. And in your packet, it's forwarded to one page, one seventy-two. Council Mayor has requested an item be removed from the consent agenda to be discussed as a first business item of the meeting. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda can signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
And for those that might want to know, the consent agenda included the city council regular meeting minutes of August eighteenth, city council session, special meeting minutes of September one, financial report, and the check register. Good deal. That gets us down here now to...
The city administrator.
Oh, there it is. On next page. Page two forty-five, if you're want to move your whatever forward. Hold on, just a second. As you may tell. Just another place.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett and council. The attached administrative reports for the period of August fourteenth to September tenth, it covers a coronavirus update, the land development code update, grant, project updates, and some information from the League of Oregon Cities and census information. The stuff last week, though, before I get into kind of discovering a little bit of the report, you know, we were so involved with fires, with smoke, power outage, et cetera, I wanted to share some information that came from the county administrator yesterday about just the weekend update on the holiday fire. And the update that I didn't have time to really get to some report because things were happening so quickly last week. But as of yesterday, the holiday fire burned, has burned more than a hundred and sixty-seven thousand acres. It's only six percent contained, hundreds of structures damaged, six hundred and twenty-eight, although I heard it's now eight hundred resources are now deployed for that fire. There have been eight hundred and fifty residents that have been placed in eleven hotels throughout the county, five hundred animals are being sheltered at the Lane County Fairgrounds, and the call center is receiving about five hundred calls a day in a non-emergency call number. The county is putting together a, what they are calling a multi-agency resource center at the Lane County Fairgrounds. And they're hoping that they're going to get some support from a variety of areas of the community for that, for example, health, medical, and mental, utilities, resources on permits and building, waste and debris disposal, scams and security information for people to be aware of during this time, housing support, insurance information, senior disability services, and a lot of other services. That is going to be open Wednesday through Fridays, twelve to seven. And if you know people who were directly impacted by the fires, there are great resources on the Lane County website and links to a lot of different areas to get help. So just wanted to kind of start with that. In terms of the coronavirus update, as of September tenth, there are eight hundred and eighteen cases reported in Lane County. When I look today, that number is up to eight sixty-eight. There were two hospitalizations and twelve deaths so far in the county. Our numbers, though, overall cases per ten thousand in the county is twenty-one point four in comparison to the state, which is sixty-seven point two. So generally speaking, we're actually really doing pretty well in comparison. I've also, I also attached in your packet, I won't go into it, but the county has put together a COVID nineteen response plan, and there's a lot of resources in there. They've kind of outlined the plan to be similar to what we have for the fires and also for, you know, in terms of yellow, red, green, and different categories of awareness. But anyway, that's in your packet for your review. Let's see, committee meetings, there haven't been any. Land development code update, we did host the community walking tour. And on that tour, we had the mayor, the planning commission chair, the economic development committee chair, and a committee member, the Elcog and the state. Our next steps, we're in the process of putting together the public information plan, also developing a webpage that will be on our city of Lowell webpage, but will be project specific. And that's where we are in that. Project updates. Main Street and Lakeview, the water line installations are complete on both streets, and the switch over on Main Street is complete. However, Max might want to speak to this a little bit, but there's been a bit of a delay this last week because, of course, the rubbish can't really work in the smoke conditions. So do you want to add anything to that, Max? Okay, just, just we're, you know, taking it as it comes. I won't go into all the League of Oregon City highlights, they're in the report for you if you'd like to read those on what they're focusing on this next year. And then there's a small article about the census, which is supposed to be wrapping up the end of the month. So any questions on any of that?
Next up is the public works report, and it's on page two sixty-two.
Mike, Mr. Bennett and council. Public Works Report. So start out with the radar speed sign. I told you guys last time, it remained in stealth mode, and it will remain in stealth mode to the end of the month. So here's the current numbers from August fourteenth to nine-nine. So numbers are similar. Average speeds are same, maximum speeds are same, few more speed violations. I think roughly about three more compared to the last one. So I have been in contact with Neil from Oak Ridge, and a few other people have made, citizens have made comments about where they think it should go. So we'll make out a good plan, and we'll get it relocated for next month. Due to recent weather conditions and fire activity, as Marsha mentioned, we'll work on the ADA ramp improvements and push-button crosswalk on North Shore, West Bounder, whichever you want to call it, and Wallow have been on hold, and also the current work on the city's street improvements. Spoke with Wildish both weeks, I spoke with them, I've talked with them this week already, and they've just already halted operations till they start next week. That's not just our operation, that is all Wildish work. So nobody for their companies working to try to keep everybody out of the smoke. Just to recap what Marsha said, the line is installed on Main Street, all service connections are on the new lines, so everybody that's on that street. The old line is still in service because of the last and final tie-in, which was canceled because of the fire. And then the same is true on Lakeview. The line is installed, but has not even been, it's got water in it, but not been coordinated for a disinfection for Brooklyn State. So it is installed, so as far as the digging and stuff, all that's completed. We'll get a project update Monday, and we'll bring it, of course, back to the next meeting for you guys. Waste our transplant collections. As everybody knows, we had a power outage, first one was a little bit of a surprise. The next two are scheduled. L.A. Electric sent out a letter for us. All three of the facilities that Public Works operates, the lift station, the sewer plant, and the water plant, all ran on generator power without any issues. So that's very good. This is the first real test of the new generator, lift station that we installed after the storm last, two years ago now. We had one small hiccup the first full night of running, about eight hours into it, it went out on the, didn't turn off, but it threw a high temp alarm. And called the electrician, had them come out and look at it, and we need to add some additional exhaust fans in there just to get the hot air out of there. So other than that, it ran the next two nights flawlessly. More transplants, algae samples remain to be non-detect. We just grabbed another set on Monday. We've been pretty good with the algae this year. There have been detects throughout the state, different regions, mostly in the northern regions. So we did replace the CL seventeen. I put this on here because it happened kind of in a hurry. The CL seventeen is our online chlorine analyzer, so it reads the chlorine every two and a half minutes that we're putting into the system. This is important when the plant is running. We were fortunate enough to have enough water the day that failed to not have to run the plant overnight or staff the water plant twenty-four seven. So we actually overnighted this unit, which you guys will see on the next check registry. This unit was four thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, and overnight shipping was another two hundred. We did try the, excuse me for a second here. We did try to replace just the part that it was affected by the unit, and that part is no longer available. The part they actually sent us was for the model above that. So that will be going back, already contacted the manufacturer to ship that back and get a full refund for that. Was installed the next day, programmed in, works flawlessly. So we're back up and running, little to no downtime. Another thing I'll add about the water plant that I didn't put on here, as most of you guys know, a lot of people were using water with the fire, especially when we were still in the unknown, see what direction it was, which really put a demand on the water plant. We have not turned the water plant off since the fire started, with the exception of last night. So we hit our full mark again, which is twenty-nine feet last night, about nine o'clock. Still keeping up with the demand, even with all the extra watering and additional usage. One thing that came up, it's kind of been put on the back burner, the generator for the high tower. High tower is the water tower on the north side of Nelson's property, which feeds water down to First Street and Sunridge residents, not for potable water, but for fire protection. It's the same thing that happened during the storm last year when we lost power two years ago. We needed to get a rental to hook up. We did last year have J and K Electric install a pigtail, so now all we have to do is get the generator, plug it in, or before we had to have them rewire the cabinet. So I will be pressing some quotes to get the appropriate unit to see how it can fit in our budget. Probably definitely something we should have. Usually don't think about it during the summer times, it's usually more the winter time with power outages and electrical issues. So I'll get some quotes for that and come back with you guys at the next council meeting.
Second, will be a permanent generator for going up there, is it a temporary to keep down here, kind of use where you need?
So I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna get input from the people to get quotes on. I think it's beneficial for us to have a mobile unit. You don't always have problems on both sides of town. The first night the power went out, when it went out initially, it was only on the north side of town, so we lost the towers. But we still had water, wastewater, and lift station. So that means City Hall was out, the library would have been out, you know, the fire station, but everything on the south side counts about power, so the school still had power. So I'll see what the best fit is. The mobile units are a little more expensive, just because they're, you're able to take them to a different location. So that might be a deciding factor for us also. But we'll get what fits the city best. But we're open to either, I mean, a fixed unit would benefit us just the same as a mobile. Mobile unit would be nice to be able to use elsewhere and be the only issue. Yeah. One other thing I did call here because there was nothing at the time, I turned this report in last week, is code enforcement. I did reach out to our Oak Ridge contact twice, once on Friday and once over the weekend, regardless of complaints from some citizens. The situations have been dealt with. And then the other issue is, I'm sure everybody has seen it, the person that parks in the lake at the water plant. He's there again today, so I did reach out to Neil, our contact with Oak Ridge. So they're working with Army Corps and the State Police Department to get some signage put up on there, since that is Army Corps property and not city property. And that's all I have.
Any questions by anybody? Couple pages more, two sixty-four is the Felice Report. I see there was some citations. Anything by anybody?
We are having court this week, Thursday. Thursday evening. Into the hall.
A new judge, the Frank's. I understand he's out of town. Nothing else, we'll move on to new business, resolution five, or seven fifty-three, rescinding resolution seven forty-seven that established a payment in lieu of franchise fee for the water and sewer utilities. Just another, would you like to?
Sure. Yes, thank you, Mayor Bennett and council. At your last work session, we talked about this as a possibility. The council adopted resolution seven forty-seven in June that established that utility payment in lieu of franchise fees. The payment hasn't been initiated, and we haven't collected any money to date. But when we were in the process of getting the loan from Business Oregon, they acquired a certain debt coverage ratio for that loan, and we didn't, our financial reports and statements didn't quite meet it. So they suggested two options, one was to increase revenues, and the other was to reduce expenses. We talked about this at your work session, and they've given a direction to kind of move forward with the option of reducing expenses. So the resolution six seven five three just simply rescinds the resolution seven forty-seven, which makes us able to meet that debt coverage ratio. That doesn't mean that we can't do it in the future, we can't look at it further into this budget cycle, or even during the next budget cycle, and reinstitute that at a different time. But right now, this is, seemed to be the best approach, to meet that with a bank financing.
I'll just leave it as a line item in the budget. Any questions of the city administrator on this?
Or concerns?
Okay, sorry. Not hearing any. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution seven fifty-three as written.
Now I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, to approve resolution seven fifty-three. Other discussions or thoughts? Not hearing any. All those in favor of resolution seven fifty-three, a resolution rescinding resolution seven forty-seven, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Not hearing any? Next up is intergovernmental agreement with Lane County Regional Housing Rehab Program on page number two seventy. Just another.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett and council. The Lane County Regional Housing Rehabilitation Program, or RHRP, is a consortium of cities that was established in two thousand and one to provide the regional approach to meet housing rehab needs. And an intergovernmental agreement was established at that time, and it was perpetual. St. Vincent de Paul administers and manages that agreement and those assets. They have requested recently that members of the RHRP execute a revised IGA, and it's simply to add the two most recent jurisdictions that have joined the consortium of, and it's Vinita and Presswell, and to consolidate it into one document. I did put together a memo just kind of explaining, if you weren't familiar with what that regional housing rehab program does as background. So if there are any questions or discussion about that?
This is the Wallow property down there, the development, they put in some twenty homes.
Yes.
No motion?
It would probably help if I took my mic off of mute. I make a motion to approve the signing of the revised, whatever that, intergovernmental agreement with Lane County's Regional Housing and Rehabilitation Program.
Have a second?
I'll second, sorry. I was muted.
All right, that's all right. We're zooming through here anyway. Okay. We have a motion, a second, to approve the signing of the revised intergovernmental agreement with Lane County Regional Housing and Rehab Program. Do you have any questions or further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor of motion to approve signing and the revised intergovernmental agreement with Lane County Regional Housing and Rehabilitation Rehabilitation Program, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Not hearing any? Next up is on page two seventy-seven. Letter from Oregon Mayor Association regarding if I were a mayor contest for two thousand and twenty-one, and school year, and discussion. Another place?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett and council. We received this letter from the Oregon Mayor's Association about this contest. If I were a mayor, a student contest for the year twenty twenty to twenty-one. It's, the contest is really long, entries can, are due May seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, so there's a pretty extended period of time for it. And I wasn't quite sure what to do with it, to be honest. It does suggest that perhaps we brought up with the school district. It seems, I mean, that's a possibility, I guess I'm looking for council discussion and possible directions here, because I'm assuming the schools are very, very busy with how to manage school, continuing, you know, with the COVID situation, and they may or may not be interested or willing to take this on. We could also just perhaps put something in the community newsletter. It doesn't have to be through the school. It actually could be something that if students were interested, they could go to the website, and they could kind of do this on their own. So I just brought it here, a suggestion from the mayor, to just discuss it and see if you have any ideas whether we should do something with this.
I like the newsletter thing, just to take off some of the pressure from the school district.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Sam, you have a thought?
Well, I, we could do both, and that would take the pressure off the school, but it would also give them the information so they could have it, because we have so many different versions of school here. It would be, you know, it might fit perfectly with so many of the programs they're doing already.
Right. Could email to Johnny Matthews and see if he's interested and.
And the charters.
Put it in, yeah.
Yeah.
And both the charters, and just see if they're interested. And also, I'd say, put it in the bridge, and I see that it's a five hundred dollar gift for the state winner. If there's a support for it from the community, I think the council should offer up some funding. I don't want to say how much right now, but if we get people interested, then, and it looks like they're actually of some quality, then I think that we might support it. But as of right now, I think, I just, I think we can just go with the consensus that we all agree it's a good idea, and we can contact the schools to see if they're interested. They probably more than likely already have been contacted, would be my guess, why, to, I would take the case that the organization would be doing it for dark, just to say that we support it, if they'd like to just say that it would be wonderful.
I can do that. I'll forward it to the schools, and I'll also draft up something to put in the bridge.
That sounds good. We had other business on here, discussion of recruiting process, but for the city administrator, I'm going, we have all the packets of information from the executive session. I think the main thing is that the recruiter is in Arizona, and he's willing to meet with us by Zoom, and we're just, I think that initially, you had a time that you'd like to, we'd like to present to him and see if everybody could be available. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Bennett and council. I have spoken to the recruiter. Unfortunately, you know, we had to cancel that executive session meeting, and then he actually left town a couple of days after that. So he is, he may be back next week, he may be back this next weekend. Either way, he said he would, he would participate, either via Zoom or maybe in person if he's here. I had talked to Council Stratus and Council Harris today, and they are both pretty occupied with what's going on with the fires. But a suggestion was made that perhaps we could have a special meeting next Tuesday, if that will work for people. I kind of wanted to call and see if that might work, and I was also wondering if we could have it a little earlier, like say six o'clock. Only, only because the recruiter, if he can be here in person, he's coming from Redmond.
I'm open for that, whatever is going to work.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Why not another meeting? That's great.
We had one canceled, does that count?
It does count, it does count.
I did find out that, I was made aware that there's an ORS one ninety-two dash six-six-zero for N seven for N D that actually requires that we have some of the discussion in just the regular public meeting, not anything about salary, but just about the process. So what I will do is I will set up a special meeting with an exec session at the end, that you can talk about money, but we can talk openly, you know, in the public, I mean, about the, you know, the brochure, the flyer, any criteria that you want to use. So that seems like a good proposal.
And I'm going to say, if it starts at six, I'm going to say we'd be lucky to be done by seven thirty, because Angie goes through each one of the little steps and steps, and this will, then of course we'll do this, this will do that. So you might want to pass that on to Dale and Tim, and if they would prefer to start earlier, a little bit earlier, we can coordinate with everybody, see what works with them. Because I know, like, tonight they have a seven and an eight o'clock meeting, so that really, I don't know if they're going to be up seven to eight, but.
I didn't know if people's work schedules are all really in the set of work.
I, I don't either. I'm the, I'm the lucky one of the bunch.
So you said that they have some brochure stuff already set up? Is that my understanding?
I had sent, sent out in the prep for the exec session, I sent out the drafts, it's all drafts.
Okay, okay. That's what I was wondering, did they come up with, did you guys come up with anything further that you could send out? Okay, never mind then, okay.
Yeah. Well, I do have one other piece of information. I have put together a candidate profile, which, when I talked to the recruiter today, he suggested that I turn it into a job description. I crafted that this week. I can send that out to, it just goes into more detail about the job entails.
Right.
I could send that out ahead of.
We can have some beforehand information, so then it maybe won't last till eight o'clock or whatever.
I agree with that.
Okay, but is the six o'clock time, is that?
That sounds good.
That sounds good.
From the presenter on how fast he wants to talk.
Okay. Great, thank you for that. I will get it scheduled.
Very good.
Okay, we have no matter comments, community. Do you have anything from the public?
No, sir.
Okay. You gotta, you gotta have to do. Okay, uh, anybody else have anything they want to say or present before we shut this thing down?
Nope, I think we're good.
Not hearing anything? Uh, we're adjourned at, uh, 7:35.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. See you next week.
Good day.
Thanks.